I'd like to call our meeting in Greensburg City Council, the board, and invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brother Willard?
Aye. I want to express my appreciation for you people taking responsibility, that take all the oath and responsibility to take care of the city in all the details. There's reading where Paul said, Paul said, "You're appointed of God." In fact, that makes you ambassadors of Christ, you're God's feet, you're God's mind, you're helpless of the Roman city. So proud of you. And glad you're here. Father, we thank you for this opportunity just to come to the throne of grace, to give you praise and honor and glory for your greatness and your kindness. Most of all, Lord, we love your love, we love you because you first loved us and called us out of righteousness. And Father, now we pray that you'll fill this chamber with the knowledge and the understanding and the spirit of God. This the revelation, and speak to the hearts of your people, Lord. And Father, help them to direct it in every area of the business tonight, Lord. And we ask this alone in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Willard. All council members are present, and we have a quorum. Any additions or deletions to the agenda administration of council?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Council, this past week, City of Greensburg in conjunction with the partners of the school district, hospital, county health department, city rec commission, Kristy was very kind to assist, well, she did quite a bit of work, in the application for the Blue Chip Award presented by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas in conjunction with the Kansas Recreation Parks Association. Blue Chip is a community health improvement program created to recognize and reward Kansas communities who encourage and support healthy lifestyles through programs, initiative, policies, and community-wide events. We're one of four communities in the state to receive it this year. This is the third year of the Blue Chip program. Mayor Lou Wegner with Kansas Blue Cross Blue Shield and Doug Vance, Executive Director of the Kansas Recreation Parks Association, will be out to make the official presentation to the city and the community. It's the community because we wrote it as with the health department, the school, and the hospital, all as partners in this. And part of the award is $2,500. And we wrote that to go to healthy lifestyles in the relocation of Davis Park through whatever we can in the community to promote our walkable, bikeable community that's in our sustainable master plan. Congratulations to the community. Day after tomorrow, we'll be receiving an award from the Kansas Chapter of the American Concrete Institute. The Bigwell Museum and Gift Shop has been awarded their top award in the category of projects under $6 million. So that's being recognized by the American Concrete Association. Just keep coming up to speed on what's going on. There'll be representatives from the city at that banquet on Wednesday night to accept the award with Law Kingdom and Pinkman County Award, which is going to be awesome. Council member reports? If none, then City Administrator comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, please bear with me, I have a few items. Included in the council's packet is a letter from Director Ed Young from KDOT Aviation informing us that we've been awarded a 95 percent grant for the design work on the airport project with KDOT's portion not to exceed $201,400. An agreement with Lochner should be forthcoming on the design phase of the airport project. I've communicated with Lochner that a formal presentation to council of the completed airport development plan should probably be held off until we have formal approval from the FAA on the airport plan as it's been presented. And one of the key things they're looking at, as a side note on that, waiting on FAA to approve burying the overhead power lines that are located on the south side of that property. And the key question in that regard is, is it okay to leave that last power pole standing or should it, from that southwest corner of the property, or should it be buried under the road? So FAA is going to weigh in on that. The grant request for the construction portion of the project has already been submitted to KDOT as requested by KDOT. It wasn't considered on this, on this next year's portion of the grant process, so we're expecting, we're fully expecting to be, as things are going along, to receive that award the next year. With a grant award being made in July of each year, should we receive that grant in July of 2014? We expect after dialogue with Lochner and with KDOT that that process for that construction for the actual installation of a dirt or a turf runway and runway lighting and things of that nature to be completed by that, by the end of that year. So it should be a very quick process once we're awarded that grant. Also in council's packet is some information about a Kansas Department of Health and Environment news release with a lengthy draft copy of the corrective action decision from KDHE regarding well number eight. KDHE is soliciting public input for the next 30 days prior to completing that corrective action decision and actually publishing it as a completed document. I've spoken with representatives of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and asked them to host a phone conference between KDHE, the City of Greensburg, and Southern Plains Co-op to discuss that corrective action decision. And I'll be taking part in that phone conference tomorrow. Provided for council also, and this is the last document I just handed you, this is a quote from Midwest Computer Solutions, our computer technician's support, with a bid or an estimate, if you will, to replace the city's server equipment that's located here in the, behind the council chambers. It's an interesting concept on virtualization that they're, that they're talking about in this document. Virtualization gives us the ability to have one server but different server environments in there to be able to separate out processes. I hope I'm saying this right. There's probably a computer technician in the room who'll maybe be able to correct me if I say something wrong, Matt. But it does give you the ability to where if you have multiple environments in one server atmosphere, one server block, if one portion of that goes bad, you can simply remove it and be able to replace that part instead of the complete server. This estimate is for less than the $5,000. I wanted to be able to, before I made a complete decision to purchase equipment like that, to be able to brief council on that and offer council an opportunity to put that on the next agenda for the next council meeting as a business item. If there were questions about why this would be necessary, computer equipment ages, just by the mere fact that years go by, you lose technical, technological ability and function on those by other software environments not being able to operate correctly together. That's kind of where we are right now. Our city processes are bogging down. It's creating problems with the operating environments that our city clerk and our treasurer and billing clerk are operating in. Critical function of our Manitron software that handles our financial accounting, you know, that, that's a very intricate part of what we do in the city, and we're having troubles with the server that we're having now. It hasn't crashed, or else I'd be briefing you a whole lot differently, but it's probably, certainly a good idea to replace computer equipment before it fails on you. Council has any questions on that? I entertain it, but, or we can simply set it for an agenda item at next council meeting.
Ed, the only question I have in the quote, they do specify that the price does not include hard drives for storage, and just wondering if you had a chance to clarify with them if what the storage needs in the city would be and what additional cost that might be if it's a need?
They had suggested three or four different hard drives, and the hard drive equipment is of very minimal cost as compared, you, I understand it's minimal cost compared to this.
Again, I would definitely recommend probably at least a minimum of four drives. You could put them in a redundant array that gives us backup case one drive fails, the others kind of pick up the slack. You don't lose any downtime or any data. But if the drives they quote you are of a lower price, they are going to be more prone to failure. They're probably not going to be enterprise-class drives that, given the load they'll experience under a server environment, may not last as long as a more expensive drive. Just as a, for instance, I'm, at the county, I'm looking at upgrading, getting four additional drives for our server because we're running out of space. Drives are running about $500 each. So for four drives, you're looking at around $2,000. But again, you can go with cheaper drives, just you may regret it in the long term. They may work out fine, but they are just more prone to failure.
Okay. Having heard this recent information, council, I did in fact visit with Matt about the server hardware. Matt and I, in this discussion, this is decent, very decent equipment that's being quoted to us. This, so there's nothing, nothing questionable about the type of equipment that's broken out here in this particular quote. With this information from Matt, however, and I know I've spoken with Midwest Computer Solutions about the hard drives, and they understand it would be the, the multiple hard drives in there for the redundancy, but with the price that's being thrown out there, I'd just as soon set this for an agenda item for the next council meeting if you're okay with that. And include that information about what hard drive prices are quoted, and that definitely exceeds anything that's, that's in our purchasing authorization for an administrator. I'd like to provide council with an update on the Greensburg Police Department, what our status is. All of the equipment's been purchased at this time that we need. We are waiting on a police protective vest to come in. It's about a six-week process. It has to be fitted correctly for a particular officer, so that equipment is on its way. No other major item is outstanding at this time, so everything's been purchased. All of the expenses that were able to be have been applied to the 2012 budgeted amount. We've obtained our agency's ORI, our agency, originating agency identifier number that we're required to have from Kansas Highway Patrol. We have that. We have records management software provided at no expense from the Kansas Bureau of Investigation. That's just recently been received into the office. And just like to let council know that from the amount that was budgeted last year, we were able to come in about $16,000 under that. So I think, I think that process was handled very well, and since Paul's arrived, he's helped tremendously to keep that number down as well. As a follow-up item on, on our last council meeting when we had talked about the tourism budget and the question about who would be able to fund and pay for the USA Today advertisement, in my communications with Stacy, she's telling me that the tourism board will, will pay the entire amount for advertisement. And as I had mentioned before, it is an opportunity cost with the, with the projected numbers for required expenditures that have already been spoken for from the tourism budget and with items that are planned expenditures or at least strongly considered expenditures for the 2013 year, and I'll name some of those. For example, wayfinding signage here in town, community directory signs, and things of that nature. If they were to attempt to fund all of those things, all of their projected expenditures as well as other projects that are ongoing, their amount ends up being just over $66,000, leaving only the $4,000. And that's without the $5,500 amount put in there. But from what I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, with the dialogue and the discussion that we've had about this topic, I'm understanding the tourism board says that they'll just work around these issues to be able to afford it themselves. And that's all I have.
Questions, council, for the City Administrator? Thank you, Ed. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Thanks again for coming, this time in the meeting, our public comment section. Anybody like to address the council? If not, then we'll move right into our business items. Council, the consent agenda is before you with approval amendments of the city council meetings of January 22nd and appropriations ordinance 1897 for your consideration.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Right along into business items. Business item A, Ed?
Council, I'd like to visit about the airport hangar buildings, the former airport hangar buildings that are located at the industrial park or the business park. In our previous discussions, council had approved to extend a prospective deadline to do something with these buildings till February. This being our first meeting in the month of February, I wanted to revisit the item with council. I've had the opportunity to be in contact with Mr. Sturgeon's sons, and they had contacted me recently to request assistance to be able to, to empty out their building in preparation for final disposition of that building. They had some mechanical problems with the door, they needed electricity to be able to, to...
Open it.
Yes, exactly, to open the door, to cut it off or something. But I had contacted Mick Kendall and asked that he put a meter out there for the day to assist them in that process. They were very appreciative that we were able to work with them on that, but their building has been emptied out in preparation for that final disposition, whatever that should be, to accept a final payment from the city or to be able to do something with our initial idea. And that initial idea was to be able to leave the buildings intact the way they are to allow a future tenant, whoever that may be, that would take up space in the area of the hangar buildings, to be able to negotiate with the building owners for any future potential use that business may, may like to have for those buildings. In that regard, council, nothing's changed. We, we hear some indications of a local company. IQ Purewood, for example, has a future interest in a spot at the business park once their business plan takes a few steps further down the road. I would ask that council consider extending this deadline once again, if you will, to the August timeframe. In some of my contacts with other building owners, I think the weather's prevented them from doing some of the steps necessary to empty them out. This would allow us to have better time into more temperate weather for them to, to empty out their, their personal possessions as well as giving somewhat more time for a potential tenant in that spot to negotiate with the building owners.
I would say the main motivation or impetus for handling the disposition of those buildings before is gone now. Before, we were wanting to maybe pay for some of the demolition costs through KDOT grant, but that ship has sailed at this point, I'm sure, so we're probably not really losing anything by delaying it further, I wouldn't think.
And where are we at come August? If we don't have anybody interested in the business type utilizing those buildings? Did we also not, quote me here if I'm wrong, but I thought we had two reasons for that deadline was, is to maybe find a business might be interested, but also to give the building owners time to decide what they might want to do also. Am I right on that or wrong?
That's correct.
So that's what I'm asking. Where are we at then come August with it?
Yeah, I hesitate to say we would extend it again. How close would we be to a company that wanted to take up residency in the, in the business park? Certainly more building owners would have the opportunity to move their private possessions out of there between now and August. At some point, I understand, a tough decision is going to have to be made. If council will remember, I had, I had brought some information based on what the county's assessed tax valuation is on those buildings. I offered council some payment scenarios on that. Council actually approved somewhat higher payment than what the tax value was assigned as. I'm grateful for that in my negotiations with the building owners. I, like I say, council, I understand a tough decision has to be made at some time. I'm not sure we're there needing to make that decision now. Potentially August would be there. If we're not any closer to a tenant in the business park to help us on that two-pronged reason for the extension, at least maybe the possessions will have been moved out of there. To address what, what Matt's talked about, Councilmember Christensen, USDA funding is still being held by the city, if you will, towards that demolition or some other acceptable purpose out there. I've visited with, with Mike Hayes and the Public Works crew, and most of that demolition is something that can be handled by the city at a much reduced cost than hiring another company to come in and do it. We'd have landfill fees potentially for some of the material, but it is entirely a task that can be accomplished by Public Works. There is an expense to that. No one works for free, but it certainly could be handled for less than the $37,000 that remains in USDA funding. And as a, as another point to that, we still have some interest in using that funding if we can get something accomplished fairly quickly with, with any future gas line that would be installed out there. So there, there are several issues being considered right now with our business park. It's the gas line, it's the, the buildings that remain out there, as well as trying to do the best we can by those building owners.
What happens if within that six-month period, we're approached by a company that is ready to hit the ground running and those buildings are in their way? If we put an extension on it till August? Maybe we should look at a shorter extension and then relook at it again if we need to do that?
Very good point. Very good point.
If they want that corner, but they don't want those buildings.
Right.
That's why I'm asking. To me, the plan at the business park was that those buildings be gone, correct? So unless we have somebody that wants in them within this six months period, then to me, the business park is not finished. That part is still standing.
Yes, sir.
So that's why I was saying in August, we need to look at it pretty hard, that that might be tough decision time right there.
And I agree, because there's only so many times you can kick the same can down the road. But by the same token, it doesn't seem like an extension, be it three months, six months, whatever we decide, at this point, it's probably still in the cards, but eventually, we're going to have to...
Bite the bullet in somewhere and do it.
I understand. Good point.
So three months? Erica, you think that's reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
Put it to May?
We can address it in three months, and if we want to go till August, at that point, we can.
Thank you, council.
You need action on that? I think we ought to in a minute since the...
I think so.
Hangar owners are under the impression that February was the deadline.
Well, I'd make a motion that we extend the timeline for the disposition of the hangar buildings in the Greensburg Business Park for three months.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Ed?
Mr. Council, we've previously visited about Rancin Financial and considering an agreement with Rancin Financial to provide a water rate study and a sewer rate study. Some of the discussion that evening, I believe, was council asking about whether capital projects, capital expenditure projects would be considered in that, and that's not a topic that Rancin Financial would provide background information on, to the city. They will not suggest projects that would be a capital expenditure project. Their role would simply be to take that information from the city. If we suggested a capital expenditure project, they would then use that financial information to plug into their study to say to the council what that impact of, would be basically on what the water rates would need to be in order to, to fund a capital expenditure project. I indicated to council that it would be my wish to have Rancin Financial down here to present to council on what they can do for us. I think, I think for the most part, council, we're going to get a free trip out of Rancin Financial, and that free trip is going to be funded by KDHE, in which case that would then have a greater impact on whether, on what the fee would then be when they came down here. I don't want to make that sound negative in any way. My communications with Rancin Financial is such that there's been an atmosphere from some other cities potentially who have repeatedly called them back for briefs and changed and required additional information each time. So with that as a background, they're trying to limit the number of trips that they need to make down here. And there'll certainly be a trip down in order to obtain the information necessary to provide information to council, and there'll be a trip down here to brief council on what, what the current environment suggests for what necessary water rate and sewer rates would be. Having said that, it's my goal to be able to answer any questions council has about the process of a water rate and sewer rate study from Rancin Financial. And I, I'll even take it to the point that Ms. Beth Warren, who I've been dealing with from Rancin Financial, suggested that if there were questions from council I couldn't answer, to call her on the cell phone, and I didn't bring her number with me. So I, I hope I can answer your questions, but I, I think this is a good step in order to provide necessary information about what our water treatment plan is going to do to our water fund. And just to remind council, I mean, our water fund has been struggling for quite some time, and we've removed all salaries out of that in order to keep that fund solvent. Do we go into the future leaving all of the salaries out of that fund and requiring... Do we go into the future leaving all of the salaries out of that fund and requiring another fund to include the general fund to be able to pay salaries when it may be more acceptable to have those salaries paid out of the water fund for the water work that's conducted? So...
How long will this review take?
My discussion about the length of time with Beth Warren is typically it's 60 days or less. It can go longer, but a lot of that depends on what kind of information we're able to provide to Ranson Financial and how quickly we can provide that.
The water treatment plant need to be up and running before they can start the process or to actually see how that's affecting the water supply?
I don't believe so.
Are we supposed to be losing some water in this blending? Is there any loss?
Yeah. Each of the options for filtering had some water loss percentage. We picked the option with the less loss, but there's still maybe 10% I think that is lost in the process.
And that's kind of, I agree, Matt, that's maximum. But what's going to happen out there is it goes all dependent upon when all the water from all the wells come in and how much you have to filter to keep it under KDHE nitrate level standards. So, if we're still able to operate as a city on wells we've been operating on without the water treatment plant, but as we grow, then we have to add in, that's going to be dependent upon how much water is... But it's a whole lot less than reverse osmosis.
Yes.
ROs 20 to 30 percent shrinkage.
It's an excellent question, though, Councilmember Goodman. There are expenditures that are new to us. For example, the amount of required salt that we have to obtain from a vendor. There could be some questions over a year's timeframe on how much salt we're actually going to need in that process. How much electricity is the water treatment plant going to consume as it goes through its process? I'm not sure if those are a large factor in being able to figure out what a potential water rate would be, but they are factors. And I'm hoping we'd be able to provide enough initial data, the cost of salt, et cetera, to be able to provide that information to Ranson Financial so they can help us.
I'm also guessing that in lieu of empirical data of just, this is what it costs over a two-year period, actual cost over a two-year period, PEC I'm sure did studies as far as they estimate we'd need so many tons of salt and the power usage is so many kilowatt-hours. And then we could use those estimates and plug those into Ranson's estimate. So, I'm guessing there's probably ways we could guess and come decently close to actual results.
Yes.
Those costs may vary, though, from one part of the year to the next, may they not? Like summertime where we have heavy water usage as opposed to wintertime where you might use more salt through the summer because you're running more water through it?
I would think that would be correct.
So, it's going to be kind of tough for a while to speculate on operating expenses until you kind of see a little bit what it's going to do.
Well, the estimate has been provided to Mick on number of tons of salt, and I believe it takes into account cyclical increases and increases and reductions on millions of gallons of water produced.
But to me, that's kind of all speculation, isn't it?
Got to be close guesses.
Well, I mean, yeah.
That's why they have levels in there that monitor the salt, and there's a mark in there that tells if your salt is down to this level, you need to reorder. Do it now.
Where do you guys get the salt for it?
It's a provider in Oklahoma.
Cargill?
Was it Cargill? Yeah.
Comes out of like Woodward or Freedom?
Freedom.
Freedom, Oklahoma?
So, this is a two-pronged presentation, or a proposal, counsel, a free water study, rate study, which they've done for communities all over the state. Second part of that proposal is, does the counsel also want them to do a sewer rate study at the prices quoted on there? As we discussed last meeting, ask some questions for Ed, and he's got more information for to consider.
Again, I think the water study is a no-brainer in that you can't argue with the price, and it has been a fund that's historically given us trouble. So, it'd be a good idea to have a third-party objective analysis of just what our water rates need to be to make sure that that fund is solvent long-term and is healthy. And again, while we've got them here, we have had, not to the degree of the water fund, but the sewer fund has at times had trouble. Can't hurt to review that as well since we'll be getting at a discounted rate. So, I'm inclined to approve both.
I agree with Matt.
I would make a motion that we approve Ranson Financial to do a water rate and sewer rate study for the city of Greensburg.
I'll stop at that.
It's been moved and seconded to enter an agreement with Ranson Financial on a utility rate review service agreement as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. Business item C.
Counsel, what I've provided to you is a copy of our citizen participation at council meetings. The bulk of this document is content that's been previously approved by counsel. There's been some additions to that and dealing with the use of recording devices, as well as a step towards formalizing a previously approved policy into a resolution format. Having said that, I think, just to inform counsel, I've had the opportunity to visit with our city attorney on this and legal representation from the League of Kansas Municipalities just by being able to contact them. I think I would, if it's acceptable to the city attorney request, that we have 10-minute executive session on this prior to counsel's decision for attorney-client privilege.
For attorney-client, okay?
Attorney-client.
We have a request administration for a 10-minute executive session for attorney-client privilege.
I would move we go into executive session for attorney-client until 6:47.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. We're back in open session. Okay, as we are continuing to discuss the citizen participation during council meetings, counsel, do you have inputs or thoughts on that right now?
Just suggest that maybe table that resolution until next meeting and give city attorney and city administrators some further time to tweak that to better...
Research it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. Item D, Ed.
Counsel, if you'll remember, we welcomed Mr. Morgan Sharp into the chambers to visit with counsel about the company called Legal Shield, a prepaid legal service, and how that process would work, if any of the employees were interested. Us agreeing to a motion tonight would allow Mr. Morgan Sharp to come and visit with the employees as step one. Step two would be counsel approving that if the employees were interested, we would agree to do the payroll deduction for that legal service, prepaid legal service. I have to say, I don't believe this is a bad idea or a bad process. I think it could be very beneficial for certain people. However, I've asked the department heads to check with their folks to see if anyone were interested in taking part of this, and I haven't had any takers on that. And I get to asking myself, is this because they don't know about the program or haven't heard about the benefits? So, questions for counsel is, do we approve city time to have this representative brief them on it for 15 to 30 minutes? And then have that employee be able to respond as to whether they're interested after being informed of what the process is? This type of a situation, I think, has come up before. At least, I understand, we've had a visitor from a prepaid legal service here before, and no one's taken him up on it. At this point, I can continue to visit with department heads and staff to see if there's any interest. That's one side of this. The second side, looking for counsel's guidance on it, is do we at least offer the opportunity for a presentation to be conducted to our employees? And then they can knowledgeably tell this person, I'm not interested. That's kind of where we are at this point.
My feeling is they have the right to know that it's available if they want it. That's why I think it would be maybe a good idea. If it's only 15 to 30 minutes of a presentation, at least that way, they would have the opportunity to know it's there if they wanted it. My feeling.
It's been offered to them, whether they take it or not.
Right.
Is there a certain time of year that you have an open enrollment period where he could be part of that process, and maybe the employees would already be present signing up for stuff?
That's an excellent point, and Mr. Sharp says that he can do education or informing of the staff at any open enrollment we may have for other programs. He can come at any time during the year. He has been asking for ways to do this that are less intrusive to our processes. We just don't have any open enrollment processes coming up right now for a while.
Yeah, I'm fine with giving that opportunity to the employees. And again, just, you know, just because they're having the takers in the past doesn't mean there won't be in the future. And really, as long as he's aware of that, that he may be making the trip and spending some time with no end result, that's his choice, so...
Then I would ask, a thought just flashed into my mind, instead of just putting it out there and kind of making it be their appointed place of duty for that day, is to provide Mr. Sharp an opportunity to brief employees, and it's voluntary for them to even take part in that. I think that allows them to make that decision whether they want to be exposed to this type
Do we need a motion?
If that's what the council desires, yes, there would need to be official action, even though it's no cost to the city. It's just allowing this to happen.
Well, then I would make the motion that we allow Mr. Sharp the opportunity to come out and speak to the employees of the city, making it a voluntary thing for the employees if they want to come or not.
All right.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. Gordon, your report tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Any attorney-client executive session?
Yes, I do have something, probably 15 minutes.
15, okay.
Make motion, McGowan's executive session until 7:10 for attorney-client.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried.
I just never noticed Erica taking her glasses off to read before.
No, Ms. Lynn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, counsel.